So we'll go ahead and get started. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda order.
They're moved.
They're moved.
All right.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Mayor's report.
I'll go slow because I'm waiting on a proclamation for CASA to come into the building here.
Okay.
But we want to welcome, and you know, this is a very special, you know, time. Would you like to make a comment before I read your proclamation?
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Chauvin. I'm the Director of CASA of South Mississippi. I want to first thank the Mayor and the City Council for being supporters of the work that we do on behalf of the abused and neglect children of Harrison County. The blue ribbon that I've shared with folks in the audience today and with you guys started in 1989 when a grandmother, Bonnie Finney, tied a blue ribbon on her van antenna after her grandchild tragically died as a result of child abuse and neglect. It was happening in her own community while she didn't live with her grandchildren. It happened unbeknownst to her, and she tied this blue ribbon on her antenna of her van to have people ask her what that was for in the eighties. And since then, many, many, far too many children have tragically died at the hands of parents or caretakers who have not been able to protect them. So in the month of April, we come before cities and counties that we serve to ask for community members to think about the children that are senselessly abused or neglected and ask community members, ask them to consider ways to support these children through a variety of opportunities. One I want to share with you is that today there are 226 children in Harrison County foster care. CASA is currently able to provide 90 of those 226 with a court-appointed special advocate. Of the 90 children we are serving today, 29% of them were abused or neglected in the city of Biloxi. Additionally, there are foster children who reside in the city of Biloxi with foster parents. These innocent child victims attend our local schools, receive services through our local CPS, and our Harrison County Youth Court Judge is responsible for ensuring that permanent plans are achieved for these child victims. The majority of these cases involve neglect as a result of substance abuse, and the majority of these kids are under the age of 12 here in Biloxi. We, as an organization, are charged with recruiting and training community volunteers to advocate for these kids, and we have a goal of by 2027, being able to provide an advocate to every child in the Harrison County foster care system. If anyone today is interested in learning more about what's involved in being a CASA advocate, I would encourage them to visit our website. I'd also like to mention that our partners at Child Protection desperately need local foster parents. So if anyone has it on their heart to consider fostering, it is really a unique way to give back to this population. My final ask today before the proclamation is something that everybody in the room and anyone listening can do. If you suspect child abuse and neglect, you report it. All adults in the state of Mississippi are statutorily regarded as mandatory reporters. That means we do not decide if abuse or neglect happened. That means that if we suspect it, we report it to Child Protection. The 24-hour-a-day toll-free number is 1-800-222-8000. Again, I just want to thank you all and thank you for the city's commitment to the safety of these children. While they are not quite voters or taxpayers, they are the future of our communities. And I'd just close with saying, I have one of my CASA volunteers from Biloxi here with me, a retired educator, Ms. Diane Rush, and I just want to thank her for stepping up for these kids.
Thank you, Ms. Chauvin.
Thank you. Is this the microphone there? Thank you, and it's a tremendous job and a tremendous effort that CASA has done over the years, and we're happy. That is our future, and couldn't have said it better. It's perfect. But our children are vital to our future success, prosperity, and quality of life. Children are also the most valuable assets. All children deserve to have a safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities that they need to foster their health and growth and development. CASA of South Mississippi supports and promotes our court-appointed volunteer advocacy so every child who has experienced abuse or neglect can be safe and have the opportunity to thrive. Through a national effort, Biloxi community members are encouraged to join together to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse and neglect throughout the month of April. This effort to give abused and neglected children in our community and around the country a chance for safe and positive future. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Fofo-Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You got a couple other things, Mayor, I think.
We've got some good news, like the Apostle Paul today.
Sure.
Mr. Lawrence is going to be happy with me today.
Good. All right. State your name for the record for everybody.
Frank Bordeaux. Thank you. Before y'all, I've given you the bylaws that have been agreed to upon all the 13 entities, y'all's appointee and y'all's attorneys for the Coast GovPro, which is the pooling, the original pooling group for property insurance. The other thing that I gave y'all was actually the actual policy terms and conditions. And I told Mr. Lawrence last night, and I think Mr. Abid would agree to this, y'all's current policies are about three feet thick. That policy is about a half inch thick, which is a good thing for you all. It has additional coverages that y'all haven't had really since Katrina. We have a $375 million loss limit now for all other perils, including straight-line wind events, and then y'all will have the same loss limit that y'all have had previously. Right now, we're at about $150,000 savings over last year for doing the pool. So it's better coverage, broader coverage. You can read the exclusions, and if it's not specifically excluded, unlike your current policy, it is included. And so another good part of this is, is the loss fund, last time I spoke to y'all, was going to be a million-dollar loss fund. That was going to be money that was set aside to pay all other peril deductibles to get your deductible down to $25,000. The idea of that is for it to build over time. When the market turns harder again, we could assume risk, or we could pay premiums with it, whatever the group decided to do with that money. The deductible, we've been able to get down, and so the loss fund contribution is only going to be your portion of a half a million. It's not going to be, you don't pay the full half a million. You only pay your portion. So having said that, everything is going very well. We're working on the policies and procedures. That's going to take some time with all the attorneys involved, and then we will have final pricing probably, my hope is, by Good Friday. And what I've been asking all the various boards is to allow me to continue to work with the administration and y'all's attorney to get the final product for 501, if y'all be willing to do that.
Any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah. On this 13 groups, so if we have any problem out of the 500,000, we pay like 300, something like that, 5 million. Is it 5 million or 500,000?
500,000 is the total loss fund.
Right.
And so that would be split up by each entity. We have a third-party actuary that we've hired collectively as a group to do premium allocation and limit allocation. That final allocation is being done right now on premium. I know the worst-case scenario is going to be about 150,000 decrease for City of Biloxi over last year, but everybody's values went up in the past five, six months, and so we had it remodeled. This will be the last time we should have to model it between now and 501. Over the past two years, we've modeled these 900 buildings probably 50 times. I mean, we've done a lot of work, but that allocation, so it's not going to be, I think that City of Biloxi was maybe 18% of the total insured value, so you'd pay roughly about 18% of that half a million dollars.
That would be our percentage.
Memorial Hospital would be about 39% of the 500,000. Now, included in your premium, included in the premium is all buildings are going to get inspected and appraised a third every year. So that's, if y'all did that on y'all's own individually, and Biloxi has done that before, that's a six-figure expense every year. That's included in your premium. Every expense that you will have as it relates to your property insurance is included in that premium. Normally, it would be above and beyond. So the actuaries included in that premium. Any of the legal work that's been done is included in that premium. So that's, the only other amount is the loss fund, and that loss fund lives with the association. And any expense money that we have left over at the end of the year gets swept and put into your loss fund. If it's dissolved, then obviously your portion that you've paid in over time would come back to y'all with any interest that was earned.
I know we kind of stayed on top of the buildings, kept putting new ones. Anytime we had anything new, we'd put it with y'all. The rest of the cities like Gulfport, Long Beach, whoever, have they updated that stuff like, compared to what we've done?
So all the 13 entities, and there's 13 entities that are in this right now. I'm making a recommendation to City of Diamond Head that it doesn't make sense for them. They have one building that's valued at $5 million. Their deductible is going to go up a little bit, and they're only saving $2,000. Whether they choose to go in or not is, but the other 12 entities, it makes sense financially, and it makes sense from a coverage standpoint. But to your point, that's why we're doing inspections and appraisals every single year on a third of the schedule. So every three years, every building of any entity that comes into this program will be inspected, and we'll get a report back on those to make sure they're being maintained. But the 13 entities that are involved in this have increased their values, like Biloxi has done over the past four or five years. They have been maintaining their buildings. The one building that's damaged in City of Gulfport is not put in the schedule until it's fixed.
Is Memorial Hospital's system involved with this?
Memorial Hospital's the lynchpin, yes. We had to have them in order to, their value, their value is about a billion one, and it's really good construction, and so that really moved the market.
If I have way more buildings than we do.
They have a lot of value. Yeah. The Merit Health acquisition in the middle of putting this together was quite a big hiccup. Obviously, $200 million in value coming on the schedule, and it's an older building. We got the same rate for the Merit building as we did for all the rest of the buildings. Markets did not ask for additional rate.
Well, I was hoping you saved about $250,000, because I got to get some.
I'm not done yet.
All right. Because I got to get some stuff paid, you know, because, which is anyone would have to, the Fofo, you don't want to pay nothing, so I got to have some money so I can get money to pay some streets, the bill stuff. We got to get that done. All right. Thank you, Frank.
All right. Anyone else on this side have any comments? Go to this side of the council, anybody? A question I have, so our libraries, are they covered as buildings owned by Biloxi or owned by Harrison County? Who pays the premium in this? Is it Biloxi that pays the related premium for those buildings, coverage for those buildings?
The Harrison County Library, Harrison County, I think, has two buildings. Biloxi may have two buildings, but the contents is covered by the library system.
Okay, so the library, the library pays out of their funds for the premium. Harrison County pays their proportion to the insurance company or to whoever they write that check out. What does Biloxi write a check out for any of those buildings or contents, anything?
If it's a city-owned building, then y'all would cover the building, they would cover the contents. Is, I'm sorry? There are buildings of those. Yep. Correct. So anything that's owned by y'all, if they own their own building, which I don't believe they can, but if they did own their own building, then they would have to cover that building. But otherwise, what they own is contents.
My point is, the premium that we write for property insurance as it relates to the library buildings, and we have four, four or five, we've got four, four libraries, that's what I want to know.
Yes, sir.
Can you give me that information, or could the administration just get it to me? I'd just like to have that to see what that.
Do you want to know how much that premium would be?
Yeah. I want to know how much the premium is and who's paying it. What the county's paying for that building, what the city is paying for that building, or does the actual library pay for it? And it sounds like contents, the library may be paying for the contents, but the building, whether it's the county or the city, somebody's paying it between us two. And I'd just like to know what that number is.
I'll give you all that.
Because that's an expense related to running these libraries. I'd just like to know.
Mr. Kenny, we paying for that. Those are our buildings. We own all those buildings. Everyone, we own every one of them.
Okay.
I'll get the premium.
So we pay the premium.
Okay. I just want to know that, because it does say Harrison County Library System, and I just want to know who has the liability for the buildings. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bordeaux.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work, Frank.
I don't see it on my little part, but before my, I would ask you to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel expense credit card to the minutes.
All right.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, bringing this back up again, we got the Box building over there. She done a great job redoing it. That's Chink and Lane. We need to pave the street on the side of the building that she just put back together for. And actually, you can do that, same way with Comfort Place. It's not, these are big projects, and Quavers on the side of Toaster Joe. These are three streets that need to be done. You're stopping progress, stopping people from building stuff. Just tell them to step up, Fofo, and get that done. You got enough money to pay all this?
I heard you.
I heard you. I know you heard me. I want something done here. You know what I mean?
Christie's got the listing.
And that's it. I got to keep doing that. I'm going to get that done yet.
All right. Ms. Guine?
Did you say Ms. Guine?
Mr. Guine.
There he is.
Guine's.
Hey. All right. I just want to thank you guys for coming on out. They're mowing down Division Street now, doing the cleanup, so I appreciate everything you guys have done and that, and done it real quick. So thanks again. That concludes my report.
All right. Ms. Newman?
Yes, so like I have said before about homelessness, especially on the Broadwater property, it's been nothing new. However, a while back, a resident, Bob, contacted me and wanted to let me know just how bad it was and how it's gotten into that neighborhood right off the Broadwater property. And since then, I told him that I would do everything in my power to help him legally, and that's what I've been doing. So for months now, we've been working hand in hand, as you all have known. Anyway, Bob says that he deserves more than three minutes to speak with all his hard work that he's put in to help his community, so I couldn't argue with that. So if you don't mind me giving the rest of my time to Bob Silvestro, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Sure.
My wife made me put down bullet points because she said I rambled, so just stick with me. I'm usually, speak from the heart. My adventure started, we found our home, and the first thing I did was go to Biloxi PD because the neighborhood looked a little whatever. I met Chief Miller, and he told me there's problems in the neighborhood, mainly drugs were working on them, not much violence, which I, I was then advised to start a neighborhood crime watch, where I met Captain Morgan, and I did. I then was asked to join the Citizens Police Academy, which I did for 14 weeks. I made approximately 125 trips downtown, back and forth. Everyone is so, about $800 in fuel out of my pocket. We were, my friend, who used to be truckers, he started a trucking company, got about 240 trucks in South Carolina right now, and I was working with him relocating trucks as we grew. So I would fly back and forth here to work on my home. I don't know what we paid for the house, but I put about $60,000 into it besides the hundred I paid for it. I got permits for everything, putting in a driveway, about 1,000 hours of labor I put in the house. In return, I'm not too sure, but I think I've been misled about some stuff. I tried to be a friend, anything. I told everyone that I was here to help, which I am here and try and bring people together. Had people been honest with me from the beginning or more open, I wouldn't have wasted a lot of time and money purchasing that home. With all the homeless, and apparently, we don't have the policemen, or I know they're doing a great job, but yeah, not all those. Now, it's, with Dixie, we've proven the movement. Now, I don't know the record Chief Chris has, but I'm going to guess, when we started this whole thing together, there was a lot of people in the properties. But from what I was told, and we're only down to a few. And that just goes to show you how many people's lives were changed and saved because, I guess I was relentless, and people started to join me. So I just want to say that I have offered multiple times to volunteer to fix this problem. And now, I think I would like to lead a coalition of my choice under the city's, whatever, at a minimal salary and pay for my gas. And I really think if I work hard, I could find the funding, the location, the people. It's probably got to be a county thing. I'm not really sure. I have no idea, but when I started this, people told me, you'll never get so-and-so to sign a no trespass letter. Well, go look at the property. Somehow or another, I drive people nuts, but I can bring people together, and I get it. So I personally would like to take responsibility with my neighbors, from Beach Boulevard to Pass Road, from Bovac to Veterans. It's now considered our neighborhood. We, as neighbors, business leaders, unsheltered, we have our own homeless. We've figured out a way to work with the city, and we can fix the problem in our area. We need leadership to help us pass some sort of, Mr. Tisdale brought up something, there's some kind of tax relief we could do for businesses along Pass Road to make them a little, I don't know. We need accountability in reference to, there's numerous empty homes in my neighborhood that have been empty a long time, that I personally know people who are willing to fix them up and put homeless veterans in them. Not for free, they probably would get the rent, or we would put new policemen in them. But no matter what I do, I keep getting, I can't do anything. I'm not trying to get you to change the laws. I'm just trying to work together. I think we need to stop some slum lords around here, because I don't want to name names, but there's some people living in some real bad conditions, and they need our help. And we're presently, the only one I found came forward to help a neighbor across the street from me, who took in a homeless person and drives them to work every day. Back Bay is trying to help them fix their roof. Presently, my neighbors have came forward and said they're having a real time, real hard time, especially ones who purchase it. No one will insure our homes supposedly because they're too small. So Mandy with Jerry is trying to make it a historic district, DeSaidis accepted it. I don't know what the answer is, but she's going to get back to us on maybe with your insurance man. What's happening is people are paying off their home and they're canceling their insurance. So we have problems besides the homeless. She'll get back to us on that. Businesses, we're less for friends, insurance. I've had a lot of people attack us over this clinic thing. I'm not anti-clinic. I'm not anti-anything. I'm just telling you, between local first responders, homeless people, my neighbors and businesses, they discuss something being a problem. They came to me, and I brought it forward to people. And my neighbors came to a meeting last week, and they didn't know what it was, but they felt as if it was the city against them, and they were publicly taken to task for trying to close a clinic. Jerry can tell you, I sent him a text message. You think they would meet with us, and we can talk about problems and be neighbors moving forward? No response. So anyway, they were very upset, and I'm trying to do this because personally, I think tonight could be a lot of people, but it could be a clown show. So I wanted to be respectful and come to you all and tell you that the gentleman who spoke for the clinic, my neighbors thought was a little arrogant, and he kind of put down their concerns about things. I mean, you physically had business owners come here and risk everything. They didn't say anything except what they saw. So anyway, and that was 170 people that came forward, not my name on a petition. I don't want to beat him up, but moving forward, they also were concerned about a property that was the old Bovac School. And what happened is Jerry and the mayor, or Mike, will tell you, that when we noticed some bad actors in the old school there, the baseball field, I worked tirelessly, running back and forth to find out who owned it, who could clean it, who owned it, who could clean it. Finally, the mayor moved everyone in, and they cleaned it up. Since that time, it was sold, and nothing has been done to it. I reached out to Elliot Homes, they told me they didn't buy it. Moving forward, I've got in touch with them, asked them for no trespassing. I think the city has asked for no trespass. I drove to Elliot's office to give him the no trespass. On a letter that he moved forward to change the zoning, or I don't know what it is, on that property, he put to fix the homeless problem. The homeless problem was fixed when he bought it. The homeless problem is back, now that it's not being maintained. We're just concerned right now, as we went to a planning commission meeting last week, people brought up concerns about putting 251 homes in that spot. And despite what they said, I know what they said, automatically Jerry said, we've heard that before. I'm not saying Jerry's wrong or right. I'm just saying, you're talking about neighbors who, because they weren't, they were too busy. You've heard the same story before. We can't see the sign code in for, whatever. They didn't know about the clinic, okay? And had everyone together known than what you know now, maybe we would have made a bit different decision. But my neighbors want our neighborhood to be the best. And moving forward, we want everyone to know that if you don't properly take care of a place and do things, you shouldn't be rewarded with changing zoning. Other than that, I'm not against anyone. Don't attack me. I don't care about social media. I've been beat up my whole life. I'm just trying to help. Any questions? Anything? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sevasthaya. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Mr. McGilvery?
Just a couple of things. Mayor, I want to thank you and Mr. Mike, and especially Ms. Sherry Bell on the work that she's put together for the amenities for the dog park on Pops Ferry. I've spoke to a lot of people out there in the past month or so, and they're just ecstatic to finally get some improvements out there, which you know we've already made some, and I want to really thank you all for that. I noticed this on our agenda today, and I hope my colleagues will agree to approve that. Additionally, Ms. Christie, a month or so ago, I sent an email to have an agenda, an item put on the agenda for the traffic committee regarding the Pops Ferry Causeway Bridge, you know, where the people fish on both sides. I received a lot of complaints out there. The speeders just come flying across that bridge, and I was going to see if the traffic committee could review that to see if they could have some type of signage, maybe some of them little bump things on both sides or something to that effect.
Yeah, we can take a look at it. We haven't met since then. I'm not sure when our next meeting is, but it's probably coming up pretty soon. But yeah, we'll make sure that gets added.
Okay, good. Before somebody gets hurt out there, because apparently it's a pretty bad situation. And one other thing, too, Patricia Place off of North Country Club, there was a water drainage pipe break or something out there two or three months ago, and they repaired it, but they didn't come back and finish the curbing and stuff like that. Somebody could take a look at that.
Okay, I'll have, that was probably done by Public Works.
I think so.
I'll have them take a look into it. Okay.
Okay. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale? Thank you. I wanted to check on a few things. Status of the Balmoral fence? North end of Balmoral, it's been working on this now for about three years. It just needs to be replaced.
Let me, let me.
Let me, let me check with Billy Ray on that as well.
PO's been issued.
Have they?
Can't be beat, they just haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay, apparently Public Works has issued a PO to can't be beat fence.
Okay, we're getting closer, thank you. Fitness equipment at Pennzoil Park, do we have anything in the hopper on that? I know that, I think there were price quotes that were obtained and...
It would be on the next agenda, along with Miramar, Mr. George.
All right, thank you, Sherry. And I've requested a street light on, be added on Churchill Avenue on a particular pole, there's just a dark spot there, and people walking to and from Pennzoil Park have to pass this wooded area that's not well lit.
We followed our normal process, we sent the, an agent out to look at it, to make sure it was valid, that the requirement was valid, it was. And the request had gone from Public Works to accounting out to pay. That light is about $160 a year.
Can we afford it?
Yeah, I'm just saying, just FYI, we get a lot of requests for additional lights, and we don't just, we don't just go put them up.
Sure.
Make sure that they're valid, that the requirement's valid.
Sure.
And then we go to, through accounting, accounting pays the bill.
Gotcha. Thank you for moving forward on that, I appreciate that. Also, and this is just if Christie would note this, Mercury Lane, basically from Beachview to Pine Grove, is probably as long as this room, maybe a little longer. But it really needs to be milled and repaved, it's a very small job, and I don't want the whole thing done, just that portion right there, just if you'd add it to the list and we get to it when we get to it. But that's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lanham, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker.
Just one thing, and I may have brought it up recently, I can't remember, but the sidewalk on Wool Market Road, going great, Landmarks, the construction company, they're completing its section at a time, cleaning up after they do a section, planting the grass after they do the section, putting the sod down, and even the traffic, I don't think's been that bad. I mean, it slowed up a little bit, obviously, just because one lane's closed, but I just wanted to report that it's going very good, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I got a few things. First of all, kinda feel-good shout-out to the Biloxi Junior High Baseball Team, they made it to the playoffs. First game against Van Cleve, they won the game without, they didn't even get a hit, they won the game, I believe, two to one. So, that put them in the championship game last night against Ocean Springs. And it was a pretty big dogfight, they came out on top three to two, so shout-out to Athletic Director Eddie Lofton, certainly the baseball coach, you know, Coach Now for the junior high, and then Coach Houghton, of course, leads that baseball program out there. They really excited the boys last night, kudos to them for getting there. I wanna move on to a couple of other things, I kinda reported to Public Works, some grasscutting that needed to be done, it's starting to grow, of course, on Hudson Cron, got an immediate response from the director, so I appreciate that, looks like that's in the works. Still need Wetzel Drive, we referred that to the traffic committee for Wetzel Drive to maybe have some signage, children at play, or some kind of deterrent, 'cause cars are taking that straight away, and I just need an update on that when y'all can provide Brody Road, this is for community development. The development that backs up to Live Oak by the Bay, I understand they may be starting to move a little bit, Director, if you can give me an update on that. What my concerns are, and concerns of others, is the size of the houses on that lot. They may not have that ready yet, but is there any way we can ensure that it is at least compatible in the look and feel and size of the houses on Live Oak by the Bay?
We don't have any design standards, but we have had a number of people ask that question about what would go in there. I've talked with John Felcher about that, who is one of the developers involved, he's actually going to build his house in there, and he said that the houses they're going to build will be nicer than the ones in Live Oak on the Bay.
Okay. Do you know the, do you happen to know brick, veneer?
Brick, yes.
Okay, all right, appreciate that. Also notice on the engineering list, Ellington and Fern are still on that list with a few updated comments, as well as the dredging project, so that's pretty good. Just a reminder, we do have a workshop tonight, and I just wanna make these comments, this workshop is certainly a collaboration inspired by this council, Ms. Newman actually recommended it, but it's a partnership with the mayor and us, and inviting the citizens to come to this forum. It isn't gonna solve all of our problems tonight, whether it's homeless, methadone, or any related issues that we have, but it's a start that we want to capture questions, ideas, and establish a baseline of specifically going forward, whether it's quarterly meetings or whatever their frequency is, to start that process that just isn't three minutes or a few minutes in this council meeting when we have a bevy of topics and things to try to discuss. We wanna kinda get focused on it, and I'm sure this is a start tonight, I appreciate everyone's help, the mayor lining up a moderator tonight, the council's participation, and certainly all of the concerned citizens that are sure to be there. We have only two hours for this focused meeting, we'll be respectful of the time, the moderator I think is gonna do a good job. But again, it's a baseline to establish, capture information to solve problems. We won't do it all tonight, but it's a starting baseline. Also, to public safety, spring break seemed to go pretty smooth, I know we still had an incident, but all in all, the traffic flowed really well, looks like everything was organized to keep the public safe, and I understand because we were so organized and prepared and things went smoothly, I even got a report that we're able to give some early outs to give a few of the officers some much, much-needed, appreciated rest. And then finally, I wanna ask that my colleagues consider closing the meeting tonight in honor of Ed Bozier. And I'm not gonna try to spend too much time, but I'll just talk about Ed as fast as I can. He was an entrepreneur, his family started Bozier's Grill on Highway 90, it eventually became hook, line, and sinker seafood restaurant, which was a major restaurant in the day. And then it had Bozier's Gifts, it had a little lounge, the Anchor Lounge, it had an arcade, a little meeting space, the Biloxi Travelodge, the Biloxi RV Park on the seven-acre footprint, and Ed certainly worked that business over and over. Ed was a colorful character, involved in a lot of modded rock groups, including the crew of Neptune when it came back after Katrina, he was the first king. I had the pleasure of working for him, and he was so excited when dockside gaming was coming to Biloxi. In fact, he got in his stamis, he had a boat at the Broadwater, and he said, "Come on, son, let's take a ride, we got these two riverboats coming in," and I believe it was the Emerald Lady, Diamond Lady, I think, I think those were the two riverboats. And he kinda got in front of them, was beeping his horn all the way to where the Isle of Capri eventually docked them. And when they opened their doors, the lines were all the way out to Highway 90 from the old factory restaurant that converted to Isle of Capri. And we went in there, and I had about 20 bucks, it went like that, and yeah, I watched Ed gamble a lot, and he got up, I don't know, probably around midnight, and he pulled out a wad of cash, and he peeled off a hundred dollar bill and gave it to me. And I was a little twenty-something-year-old general manager for him, but he gave me that hundred dollar bill, he said, "See what you can do," and he left. So, about three hours later, I was up $200. And I couldn't wait to get back to work the next day, and walk into his office, and I didn't cash him in, I kept those two chips, and I pulled them out of my pocket, and I gave him his hundred dollars back. And I was so proud, and he looked at me and said, "Oh, hell." He said, "I was hoping you'd lose all that money and owe me a hundred dollars so you wouldn't never go back in them gambling joints again." So, honor of Ed Bozier, I'm sure when he got up there to St. Peter, he told St. Peter, "I did pretty good, here's a couple of chips back." So, I appreciate y'all listening to that story.
You wanna add something to that? His mom had the first Dux on the south side of the highway in Biloxi.
That's correct.
By B Y's Grocery Store.
That's correct.
And I got it all spelled, she was a pharmacist, used to call her in the sixties.
That's right. That is a story, too, I remember the pharmacy stories, too. But anyway, I think it's, I think it is relative that we honor him after this meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and close the council reports, and we'll move on to the public agenda. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. When your three minutes is up, you'll hear this sound. And we'll try not to terminate you right away, if you had a couple more seconds that you need, it's only a couple of seconds to finish your thought, that's fine, but we have to move on and finish our agenda. So, we'll go ahead and begin. Anyone on my left, this side of the room, would like to come up and speak? Anyone? No one? Okay, anyone on my right? Yes, sir, come on up and state your name.
David Baldwinski, I'm a resident of Ward Three. Would like to discuss this past weekend's spring break. I'm glad to hear that you'd mentioned that we were able to cut some officers loose. I live right there on Highway 90. From my observation, it was a, the law enforcement operation was ridiculously overwhelming and kinda embarrassing, it should've been embarrassing for the city. I think the message sent was loud and clear, we don't want those people here, and we don't think that they are law-abiding citizens. It was not a traffic event, there was no traffic issues, but there was an overwhelming, ridiculous amount of police everywhere. We had everybody here except the Mississippi National Guard. And I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if they weren't on standby at Camp Shelby. I don't know how much that cost me as a taxpayer, but I would appreciate it in the future that when we host these special events, that we have this law enforcement presence, that the chief or someone from Biloxi Police gives us an after-action report on what we paid for, what they may have prevented or what they think they accomplished. But going forward, I think it's safe to say that next year's Black Spring Break, we can do without the overwhelming show of force. I think between last spring and this spring, I think they got the hint. I don't think we're gonna get, we're gonna get the black caravan of spring breakers like we anticipated, or whatever they thought was gonna happen. So, that was, that was, it was ridiculous. I walked up and down the beach, there was nothing going on. Matter of fact, even if they did come, there wasn't even parking for them. Law enforcement took up one-third of the parking places in front of the Colosseum. It was embarrassing, it was, I was embarrassed for the city. This should be a welcoming city, this is a city that thrives on tourism. I think the casinos, the hotels would appreciate it when people would come here for spring break. The fact that there may have been a shooting has nothing to do with spring break. There's shootings all the time down here, this is the South. Little men love big guns, it makes them feel powerful. It had nothing to do with spring break, there was no traffic, there was no nothing. It was a tremendous waste of money and time. I am, like I said, I do appreciate that on Sunday, they kinda figured out that, oh, I guess this wasn't the big thing they thought it was gonna be, and they were able to cut some people loose to save taxpayers a little bit of money. But I would expect in next year's issue of the B-mail, we'll have a breakdown after-action report of what we paid for that. 'Cause it was ridiculous and unnecessary, and I was offended for the city. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I comment to that?
This isn't question and answer, all due respect, all due respect.
That's fine, 'cause I do have a good comment, but I'll hold it to myself.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Anyone else on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? Last chance, did we miss anyone?
I don't know if I'm allowed to comment about whatever that gentleman said, but I just wanted to tell you something, I really felt like the police did a great job. I'm willing to bust anyone's chops in anything, but when cruising came here, that was the same response. I didn't notice much difference, I did notice less people going through my neighborhood, but I think it was probably more about NIK and people not being able to understand, even though the mayor and everyone changed the signs and made sure the road was open. I don't know what it was about, but I know that when my brother comes from Naples to go to cruise, and he was upset 'cause traffic couldn't move, so it's kinda like the police department is stuck in, like you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, and like for someone to say, "Well, we only had a shooting happen," I live there, we really don't have many, well, once in a while the homeless area, but we don't have that many shootings. So, anyway, I'm not here to rebuttal, I'm just saying, I think the police did a great job, and I'm glad they were able to go home a little early. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That citizen comments is closed, we'll move on to, there's no policy agenda, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, but on B, Bravo, the $200,000 we had to move it to the water sewer for maintenance, we didn't have that budgeted from the beginning of the year, would it, would come up, cause that problem? $200,000 was put into the water sewer.
We just cut the budget too tight, and they had more work than they had money for. And I know they're gonna run out of money at the end of the year, you don't like the water sewer guys sitting with no money in the bank. So, we just, we know when we went into the budget this year, we shaved their request pretty tight, based on, you know, previous years, we gave them less money than in previous years, and it's working out like they're gonna need it now. Don't have any option but to do a budget amendment.
Where it come from, the idea we didn't need it, the maintenance part? I mean, the maintenance is constant all the time, so if we have $200,000, something's done wrong with the budget time. Hey, this is only April, and you know, you said we out of money already with the water sewer department? So, I mean, I just figured something, something didn't work. Wasn't handled right to me.
Where is the money coming from for the 200, is that coming out of general fund?
General fund.
General fund?
Correct.
That would be paid back through the enterprise fund, or will this all be allocated towards something that is not required for the enterprise fund to cover?
Diana needs to answer that. Yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask our accounting manager to write you an answer.
Create a do-to-do-from that will be reconciled with the...
Yeah, so a lot of towns, we have to borrow money for the enterprise fund and we get the funds?
Borrow money, just do a do-to-do-from.
Yeah.
But Diana needs to get the specifics on that.
All right. Can we get that answer maybe?
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to step on your time there, Councilman.
On the chief on the police cars, this is buying the car, how much are you gonna do to dress them up?
This is just the outfits, to finish, to finish putting the equipment on them so that we can assign them out, that's all this is.
So, we have to have a resolution for that, too? This is just paying, buying the car itself, correct?
No, we've already done that, they should be in any time now. This is to outfit and put the lights and all that kinda stuff on.
Eleven, twelve thousand per car, just to dress them up, okay. And if any on M? Keegan's Bayou, are they dredging? You keep seeing redevelopment, they've authorized an infrastructure agreement, so what are you doing to Keegan's Bayou? I know you can't afford to dredge it out, so what you gonna do?
Actually, we are, we're gonna dredge it, we're dredging it from Division Street all the way to the mouth of the bayou. It's never been dredged out since Katrina, that was one of the areas we were never allowed to do, so it's got a lot of sediment built up in it. So, it's, we're gonna dredge it all the way down.
Yeah, I was in high school in 53, another day, you drive something in the water, you never seen it again, it was gone. I don't know if something ate it, or what happened to it?
Yeah, now you can see the bottom.
You couldn't stand up in the bottom, we had about five or six...
It's this deep now. It's terrible. So we're finally going to be able to get to get that out of there, to help a lot of the flooding that backs up on Keesler and on Division Street.
Thank you.
'53?
'53, that's funny, that was the first year they opened their name on the bayou. Yeah. You, what are you, selling diapers?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is that it?
No, on the boat rental, didn't we have them before, or just a new, a renewal? This be on V?
V, V is in Victor?
Yeah. They had a contract before, didn't they? Were we renewing it?
V is in Victor is in excursion boat rental.
Second.
Rachel knows that.
Terminated his agreement last year and pulled his boat out. Now he wants to go back in.
Well, his one went to Bay St. Louis?
No.
No, he didn't go to Bay St. Louis. He has a smaller boat, this parasail boat.
Parasail.
Pulled it out, pulled it out of the water, terminated his lease. Now he wants to go back in. We kind of talked with them. He understands he will keep it in the water for one solid year at a time.
Okay. It was a paddleboat that went to Bay St. Louis.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGivory? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, sir. On item J, Sherry, that has to do with the dog park. And it just says some equipments going to be purchased for the dog park. Could you give us a brief description? I'm not sure what that entails.
If I can remember, it includes a fountain, a water fountain. It includes some jumpovers, some picnic tables, things of that nature.
That's fine. Thank you. On item Q, this is temporary staffing solutions. So I'm thinking there... All right, so we're paying 19...
Those are the additional...
Right, we're paying...
Contract waiver.
Right, contract, contract labor. We're paying 1924 an hour, up to 2219 an hour, for which the temp, who actually works for this company, gets $13 an hour. Thinking we pay 15 bucks an hour and benefits, we can't find people to do these jobs?
Correct.
Okay, I don't know...
The key thing, it's loaded for when we need people for four months or three months.
Right. Okay. But I'm looking at the vacancy reports, too. I don't know, I don't know what we do in terms of recruiting, or what we do to get the word out, but it's just...
Fifteen dollars an hour, plus, you know, the...
Right. Right, we just have, we just have a significant number of vacancies that we can't fill and...
Even at 15 an hour.
Right. And the benefits, but, okay.
The fastest way to respond to specific things like, you know, do some grass cutting and ditch.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. And on item U, this is the South Mississippi Planning and Development District. And this involves a program that we're working, we agree with them to work on. And there are some IEPs that have to be developed. Who develops those? Is it SMPDD, or is it the city that has to write these?
Job description.
Yeah, job, who does that?
We do.
Okay.
With their help. We haven't had one of these for a couple of years, but they're, and they have limitations on their...
Right.
Health issues.
Right. And there are, on page three of the agreement in red, it says, "This agreement is effective from July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025." So this ends in a couple of months? I don't know if that's a misprint.
And then would be extended? Then we'd have the option to extend it?
Okay. So you have the option to extend it. That's fine. All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Schumaker? And I don't have anything. Any exceptions?
We'll pass the consent. They won't do that.
What's that?
We'll pass it.
All right. We'll go ahead and pass the consent and then ask for the exceptions. All in favor, consent? Are there any exceptions?
None.
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 No, I have none. Okay, great. We'll move on to code enforcement hearings.
Item A on the agenda, Jacob Stanslow, Picoiac, et al., 274 Bluer Drive. That case has been resolved. Item B, Genevaian J, Dotchuk Estate, 259 Rodenberg Avenue. This property's still in violation.